Good morning. Welcome to City Council Chambers this morning. In attendance, we have yours truly, Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, Chair of this committee and also represent the 6th District. To my immediate left is Danielle McCray, Vice Chair of this committee and Representative of the 2nd District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have, to my far right, Edward Ryssinger, Councilman Edward Ryssinger, Member of the Committee and Representative of the 10th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have Eric Costello, Member of the Committee and Representative of the 11th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have Robert Stokes, Representative of the 12th District and Member of the Committee. And we also have Councilman John Bullock, which is joining us today because his bill is the first bill being voted on. And then also behind this group, we have a member of the President's Office, our Legal Representative Rebecca Simmons. And then directly to my right, we have staff to the committee, Sam Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
This morning, the Taxation, Finance and Economic Development Committee will have a hearing for, we have four bills that we're hearing today. And this first bill is 19-0448, Sale of Property, 801 Bradish Avenue, for the purpose of authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all of its interests in certain property known as 801 Bradish Avenue, Block 2373, Lot 001, and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on September 23rd, 2019. This bill was sponsored by President Brandon Scott and Councilman John Bullock. And we'll first hear comments from the sponsor.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. This is pretty straightforward. Again, the school's been operating within this facility for quite some time, and just looking to acquire the buildings they can do additional improvements. So again, I thank you for your favorable consideration.
Thank you. The committee will now hear from agency representatives. We'll start with the Planning Department, Eric Tezo.
Madam Chair, Department of Planning has no objection to the bill.
No objection to the bill. Any questions from the committee to report the Department of Planning? The City Solicitor's Office, we have Victor Tavila.
The Law Department is prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development.
DHCD stands by our report and recommends approval of the bill.
Thank you, Stephanie. Department of Transportation, Liam Davis.
Madam Chair, Department of Transportation stands by its report, no objection.
Thank you. And Department of Real Estate, Walter Horton.
Catherine Zoppo, Department of Real Estate. Department of Real Estate supports the City Council bill.
Thank you. You're a new person for the Department of Real Estate?
Sorry?
Are you a new representative for the department?
Yes.
Okay, welcome. Department of Finance, Pedro Aponte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Finance Department stands by his report.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, on this bill, we have no public testimony. We're going to go ahead and move for a vote on this bill. Is there a motion to move the bill? Second. Moved by Ryssinger, second by, who is the second?
Costello.
Costello. Move for a vote, Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Ryssinger?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
This bill will come out on second reader on January 23rd.
27?
Thank you, on January 27th. We will now hear the bill 19-0469, Release of Easement, 10 South Howard Street, for the purpose of authorizing Mayor and City Council Baltimore to release a pedestrian easement located on the property known as 10 South Howard Street, and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. The bill was introduced on November 18th, 2019, and this bill was sponsored by Councilman Eric Costello. Comments from the sponsor, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill helps facilitate a significant economic development project at 10 South Howard Street. I'm fully supportive of it. I'd like to note that the Downtown Partnership of Baltimore, which is the Special Taxing District, as well as the Community Association of Record, is in support of this. They have done extensive outreach with the community, along with city agencies, Department of Planning, Baltimore Development Corporation, Department of Transportation, et cetera. And I look forward to this hearing and ask my colleagues for favorable consideration. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmen. The committee will now hear from the agency representatives. We'll start with the Department of Planning, Eric Tezo.
Madam Chair, the Department of Planning unfortunately has to recommend unfavorably for this bill, we applaud the redevelopment effort for this building, but we're obligated to take a longer-term view. We recognize the immediate goals for the developer for this building, but we're recommending a broader view to activation on Howard Street, and we would prefer to keep that connection.
Thank you. Any comments from the committee, sponsor?
Yeah, I certainly appreciate Planning's perspective on this. We did have a one-hour meeting with the development team, myself.
Allow him.
Sorry. I certainly appreciate Department of Planning's perspective on this. We had approximately a one-hour meeting with Mr. Tezo and his team, along with Baltimore Development Corporation, Downtown Partnership, myself and the development team. And while I can certainly appreciate the concerns that he's raised, or specifically that Department of Planning has raised, I think that Baltimore Development Corporation has come up with some good ideas on how to help mitigate those concerns that have been raised by Department of Planning, so I would respectfully disagree with Department of Planning on this, but certainly do appreciate their perspective and insight.
Thank you for your added comments. Any other comments from the committee? We'll move on to Department of Housing, Stephanie.
The Department of Housing stands by our report, no objection.
City Solicitor?
Yes, this bill meets form and legal sufficiency.
Okay, thank you, Hillary. Department of Transportation?
Madam Chair, Department of Transportation stands by its report, which is no objection.
Department of Real Estate?
Department of Real Estate supports the passage of this legislation.
Department of Finance?
Department of Finance stands by his report.
And is the Parking Authority here?
Yep. The Parking Authority does not oppose the passage of the bill.
Okay. Is there any public testimony on this? No public testimony. Will, do I have a motion to move this bill?
Moved.
Moved by Councilman Ryssinger.
Okay.
Second by Stokes. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Ryssinger?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. This bill will also be, will move to second reader on January 23rd, 27th. Okay. So we're going to take maybe just a two-minute recess so the other people can fill in on this next bill that we're going to have, the Passage for Higher Service Tax corrective. So just two minutes, bear with us. Thank you. Back in session again. Thank you for your two-minute patience. Okay, this next bill is Bill Number 19-0320, the Passage for Higher Services Tax Corrective, for the purpose of correcting provisions governing the city's passage for higher exercise tax to conform with limitations imposed by state law, providing for a special effective date in generally relating to the imposition and collection of an excise tax on passage for higher services. This bill was introduced on January 14th, 2019. The bill was sponsored by former President Jack Young. And we're now going to move to the agency reports, and we're going to start with, we'll start with the Finance Department, so you can go ahead and explain.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Pedro Aponte, Revenue Director for Baltimore City, and thanks for testifying on this bill. It's been a long year waiting for this hearing to happen. This bill was, the purpose of the bill is to make the state law and the city law in sync. Currently, the city law has the basis for imposing the tax on a per trip per passenger, and the state law has the language that the charge should be a per trip imposition. Another correction that we are asking for this legislation is that the state law has the authority, the imposition of the taxes authorized on the jurisdiction where the trip is originated. Or legislation says that the tax is imposed in a trip that is originated within the city or outside the city and ending in the city. So we want to make these two laws also in sync. And we approached the state back in 2018 and asked them to start collecting the taxes on our behalf, and they said that because the discrepancies of the law, we need to make those amendments in order to, for them to actually collect it. So that's why this legislation is required to move forward. We are also asking for an amendment to increase the existing tax of 25 cents to 50 cents, and we have a documented order of research and the estimated fiscal impact for the city and why this legislation is urgent to pass. And if you have any question, I'd be more than glad to answer all of your questions.
Vice Chair McCray?
What's the projected revenue, once we get the state to, what is the projected revenue, once we get the state to start collecting these taxes?
The, what we estimated at the time of putting this legislation was $2.1 million. I just have to emphasize that the data, the rideshare data is very limited, so we have to find ways to come with that number. And we actually, in the response, have a range, assuming a certain level of ridership, but the estimate is $2.1 million, what we put in the legislation.
What other cities or municipalities, so we're looking to increase this from 25 cent to 50 cent?
Sure.
What are the other cities or municipalities within Maryland, what are they charging for this fee?
The few jurisdictions that are currently charged for this service is 25 cents, however, the city is exempt from this cap by state law. So we are, there's a flexibility for us to move that rate.
So we would be the only ones who would be charging 50 cents?
That's correct.
Okay.
But we will be the only one, because we are the only one that have the authority to do it.
Any more questions from the committee?
More of a comment, Madam Chair?
Councilman Costello?
Thank you. And this isn't a surprise, as we discussed this morning, I'm just concerned with jumping from 25 cents to 50 cents, considering, you know, per my colleague Councilwoman McCray's question, every other municipality in the state that is utilizing this is charging 25 cents. Considering every single tax across the board is the highest in the state that we have in Baltimore, from the parking tax, the amusement tax, the cell phone tax, the bottle tax, real property, personal property, income tax, et cetera, I just have a lot of concern with taking what was originally proposed at 25 cents and upping it to 50 cents. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's just my 2 cents or 25 cents on the matter.
Councilman Ryssinger?
Madam Chair, thank you. I just want to concur and piggyback on Councilman Costello's comments. I think we should go along with whatever the other subdivisions are charging, it's 25 cents instead of 50 cents. Again, not to be redundant, we got the bottle tax, we have all these tax fees, so if the other subdivisions are only charging 25 cents, I think we should follow suit with that. The city needs money, more money, I think we should probably be looking at the waste that we have in some of the city agencies, especially DPW, after reading the Inspector's General's report, instead of to keep the taxing people. Thank you.
Are there any more, are there any more comments?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, you may.
I just want to explain the reason why we are asking for this increase.
Please do.
And we try to put as much examples in our response. As you can see, historically, parking-related revenues have been declining for the last couple of years, and this is a consequence of having alternative for transportation within the city. Now we have scooters, we have Uber and Lyft provide this type of services, and that has declined participation in garages and any parking facility. We estimate at the time we put this legislation together, that the decline in revenues about $4.1 million. That revenue goes to the general fund, and as we know, general fund is the funding source for most of the services the city provides. So this is an offsetting action in order to compensate for that deficit.
Any questions from the committee? Thank you. Do we have Visit Baltimore represented?
Visit Baltimore stands by our report.
I'm sorry, okay. Department of Transportation, Lee.
Madam Chair, Department of Transportation stands by its report, which is, we're supportive of the bill.
Of the bill as is. Department of, the Baltimore Development Corporation, is there a representative here? Yes.
BDC supports the passage of the bill, they didn't have a recommendation on the amendments.
Okay. And the City Solicitor's Office?
The Law Department stands by its report and is prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Are there, are there any committee members that would like to move the amendment to this bill?
Finance amendment?
The, yes. So we're going to go ahead and move to take a vote on the bill as is. Is there a motion to move the bill as is?
Second.
So moved by Costello? Yes.
What's the, what's the status, I guess this is a question for Hillary, there's an article in The Sun yesterday on this, what's the status of recouping the $2.1 million that Uber collected and gave back to all of its customers?
I don't know if we've looked exactly at that question. We've talked about collecting this tax in the past, and it was, it's always been lawfully possible. The question is, as I understand it, an administrative problem.
So we haven't collected it, correct?
My understanding is we have not corrected it, collected it.
And the reason we haven't collected it is because we needed some change to city code to align definitions of?
The conversations that I've been involved with have suggested that it's been an administrative problem, and it hasn't been done.
So Uber collected $2.1 million, Lyft didn't collect anything, Uber has decided to give that money back to its customers. What, what is Law Department's position on that $2.1 million?
I don't know that we have a position at this point. I mean, it really hasn't been discussed in that kind of detail at this point. We've talked about generalities, about could we collect the tax? The answer was yes, we could collect the tax. The question about it being given back to the customers, we haven't really talked about that issue.
So I guess I'm not asking the question the right way. So Law Department's position is that we were able to collect the tax, however, there was an administrative issue because there was misalignment of certain definitions in city code that needed to be corrected and has yet to be corrected, but presumably that process has started today with this committee hearing, correct?
Well, Finance Department was basically leading discharge, so maybe that's a better question for them, but let me tell you what we talked about. We have, we've had this authority to collect, to authorize this tax for years, for 20, and it's actually been on the books for a while, but we didn't collect it, and I think there was an administrative problem. When the, when the state law came down, there was an opportunity to use the state processes, and that's when the Law Department got involved, and they said, well, can we do this? And I said, well, of course, if this is what we need to do to collect the tax, then we need to do that. And I'm hoping I've got that straight from the Finance Department, because this was sort of a joint conversation that went on really over a long period of time.
So if we're authorized to collect the tax, I guess, because Pedro and I, we spoke at length this morning about this, but I guess I'm confused, law's saying we're authorized and finance is saying?
Can we just clarify, so Pedro is here to clarify this too? So the state, the law says that the Comptroller of the state of Maryland has to collect this particular portion. So administratively, we had reached out to them to see if they were, would be willing to collect the tax on our behalf, even though there were inconsistencies between the law. I mean, what we were told from them is that the companies, the industry had said because of the inconsistencies that they weren't going to pay. So administratively, the Comptroller had said, we're not going to collect it on your behalf. Now whether we can take further legal?
Can you pause for one second, just so I don't lose my train of thought? So the Comptroller said that we can collect it, the company said that we're not going to pay it, and the state Comptroller concurred with the companies?
Yes, we asked the state to collect the existing law on our behalf. We were told that, and again, the law says that the Comptroller has to collect this particular portion, the city can't collect.
Right, right.
And so, so we asked them to do that, they said that they would give notice to the industry that they would collect it. They then informed us that the industry had told them that they weren't going to pay it because of the inconsistency. So from there, it?
And pause one second, please, and thank you. So the Comptroller's position was that they agreed with the industry? What was the state Comptroller's position at that point?
The Comptroller's position was, there are discrepancies in the law that need to be clarified in order for us to collect it. The basis for the tax are different. And the industry pushed, yeah.
So the state Comptroller agreed with the industry? Okay, so fast forward, so Uber's still collecting it in anticipation of the city taking some action?
We really don't know what authorized them to collect the tax, even though the discussion with the Comptroller's office, the industry in the city was, we have to change the law in order to impose and collection of the tax.
By the Comptroller.
By the Comptroller, so.
So Uber collected the tax on their own?
That's correct.
Okay, knowing that they, presumably knowing that they were not going to remit that to the Comptroller, to be remitted to the city unless the city took action to clarify?
That, that's the path, and, and just one more?
Because that was, that part was completely left out of the article, unless I'm mistaken. Is that correct?
Totally, yes.
Okay, so the article is missing context?
Right.
Okay, that wouldn't be the first time, so.
And I can provide this letter from the city to the Comptroller's office when we asked them to collect the tax.
And do you have the Comptroller's written response to that?
Yeah, the response was through email saying, yes, we're going to advertise the rate, and we're going to move forward with this company, started in June 2000, June, June 2018, is when they start, we're supposed to start collecting the tax and then remitting to, to the Comptroller's office.
So when did we, when did we find out from the, I'm assuming we found out from the Comptroller, that Comptroller said to Baltimore City, hey Baltimore City, we're not going to be able to give you any money because the, the industry has informed us that there's this issue of clarification in the code, and we concur with them. So when did the, when did the Comptroller alert us to this problem?
The communication, the last communication with the Comptroller's office related to this issue was December 2018, when they said, that was the time when the first remedance, January 1st, was ready to be, coming to the Comptroller's and then the city, they decided, they informed us that, the conversation landed to uncollected of the tax because the industry has no basis for, no clear basis for imposing.
Understood. Did we know, did Finance or Law know that Uber was collecting that tax throughout the last year?
We suspected, because we have some, I guess snapshots of services provided where they have the 25 cents, but we wanted to move this legislation forward?
Right.
In order to?
I get that, yeah. I'm not trying to point the finger, I'm just trying to unfold the story here. So, so Finance and/or Law had an idea that this was happening, but didn't confirm, I mean, I as a consumer, I received a $9.75 refund in email last night, which I guess means I took 39 Uber trips over the last year, or since December of 18. I had no idea as a consumer that I was being charged that 25 cents per trip. So if I didn't know it as a consumer, I think it's reasonable that the city didn't know that Uber was doing that, they were just collecting that in a vacuum, right?
That's correct.
So at what point did we confirm that Uber was actually collecting the tax?
We did not confirm that.
So we just found out, you guys just found out this week like the rest of us?
We find out, we, it was confirmed last week when those reforms start, you know, being received by customers?
Yeah.
That they were actually collecting the tax, but not remitting to us.
Yeah, and I think I sent one over to Director Raymond on Friday, it was the first one I received from a constituent. Okay, so fast forward to now, there was discussion of this $2.1 million and whether or not that money is actually due to the city or not. So I guess my initial question is for Law. So I guess my initial question is for law. I mean, I know finance's perspective on it and I certainly appreciate that from our conversation earlier this morning, Pedro. Department of Law, do you believe that that money is owed to the city?
My belief is the, the money is owed to the city.
So, if that's law's position, are?
You know, the law's position is whatever the, whatever the solicitor is. When I've been involved with this, I thought that they owed us money from the get-go.
Okay.
Has, has finance had direct contact with Uber or Lyft? Have you had meetings and direct?
In preparation for the response to this legislation, we asked the industry for ride-sharing information, which was denied. And we have a conversation with them on the phone. We said?
On the phone?
On the phone, yes.
And we've also, I think during the Pew administration, I remember we had a conversation with Jim Smith and myself in the room and we got on the, on the, on a phone and talked to Uber about this particular issue.
Okay. Did you have more questions?
I do.
Go right ahead.
So, has the solicitor or the deputy solicitor been looped in on this issue?
I've been out of, I've been out of commission here for the last couple of days, so I don't know what's, what's happened in the last, I did see the, the article, but I, I don't know what the solicitor or the deputy solicitor have been talking about at this point.
So, your, Victor Turville's analysis as a lawyer, you're not speaking for the law department or the city or the solicitor, is that the city is owed this money?
We've had a tax, we've had this tax for a while, and the state hasn't had this tax for a while. And so when the state put this, this law on the books, I think in 2017, maybe 2016, then, then it became, oh, the comptroller can, can collect this money. And I think that's when, my understanding is that's when we got interested, or when Uber said, well, well, that's when I think things bogged down in trying to figure out exactly who could collect this tax. So my position has been, uh, the city government has always been able to assess this tax. We did have a tax that it wasn't collected at some point, once again, was some sort of administrative snafu. Don't know anything about it other than it wasn't being collected.
And just to confirm publicly, we discussed this morning, that taxis, taxi rides pay this tax currently, correct? So if I, if I order a taxi right now, I'm paying a 25 cent tax on top of that, which eventually is remitted by the taxi company to the comptroller and then remitted back to the city, correct?
No, taxi tax operates different. They have to report to the Bureau of Revenue Collections and pay taxes directed to us.
Okay, so the, the bill that Ferguson did for ride-sharing, that required that it go through the comptroller? That's why there's a difference in process? Okay. So I, I guess my, Madam Chair, thank you for entertaining my, the rabbit hole I've gone down today. So, the question is, is, is the, once this, this passes, once this bill passes, let's assume it does, we can start collecting that tax effective immediately, right?
Yeah, the, the state comptroller's office?
Will collect it on our behalf?
Will collect it on behalf quarterly. They will remit the tax to us, yes.
And what's the effective, I don't have this bill in front of me. What is the effective date of this? Is this upon enactment?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yes, I think it, yes. Takes effect when enacted?
When enacted. Okay. So my last remaining question is, what's, what is the game plan for the $2.1 million? I'm not suggesting one way or the other. I'm just curious what the city's position is on that, or the administration's position.
From our perspective, we want to go back and see what our options are to go back and collect that. Again, we have to talk to law to figure out what our, our potential course of action is. But legally, we think we were owed that tax, but we haven't made a decision one way or the other about how we'll approach it legally. From a financial perspective, of course, we want to go back and get as much of that revenue as, as possible, but we still need to discuss that internally before we decide what action to take.
Madam Chair, would it be okay to request that finance and/or law and/or government relations keep this committee updated each and every step of the way moving forward?
Definitely.
Does anyone have an issue with that?
And it also seems like there needs to be an in-person meeting with finance and these two businesses.
Okay, so you guys will keep us updated via email? Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, I'm good. I, I think there was a, a motion by Councilman Risinger. If it's okay, I would second that.
Okay. Motion to move the bill as is by Councilman Risinger and second by Costello. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Risinger?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
This bill will move to second reader on January 27th. Thank you. And then we'll just take one minute to let the prospective people clear out so the next group can come in. All right, we're now going to move to the fourth and final bill for this morning. Bill number 19-0479, Property Tax Credit, Low Income Employees of the City of Baltimore for the Purpose of Establishing a Tax Credit Against the Property Tax Imposed For the Principal Residents of Certain Low-Income Employees of the City of Baltimore, Imposing Certain Limitations, Conditions, and Qualifications for Credit Eligibility, Providing for the Amount, Duration, and Administration of the Credit, Defining Certain Terms, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. This bill was introduced on December 16th, 2019. The bill was sponsored by Councilman Ryan Dorsey, and at this time, we'll take comments from the sponsor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill is one that I brought to state legislators in 2017 for the 2018 state legislative session. It was introduced, the, the, the concept of, I brought the concept to them so that they could introduce enabling legislation. That was introduced by then Delegate Bilal Ali and Senator Bill Ferguson. It was picked up again in 2019 by Delegate Stephanie Smith and passed. So we have the enabling legislation from the state, and I think this is a really important opportunity for us to provide meaningful assistance that will help low-income employees who work for the city to better, have the capacity to build wealth in home ownership. We know that these employees are more likely to be living in the city already. Among the, in the grand scheme of who, who works for the city actually lives in the city, lower-income employees are likely to be living in the city. And we know that the city now is a slight majority rentership, and that with affordable housing being in short supply in the city, renters are very likely to be paying more than what we consider to be affordable for rent, whereas mortgages by comparison are significantly lower in many cases for comparable housing, or probably in all cases for comparable housing, it's less to pay for a mortgage than it would be for a rent for the same place. So this helps people not only to build wealth through buying equity into their home and their property, but also to have more money available to spend on other things. And again, for people at the lowest income brackets, this really is, in a lot of cases, not likely to translate to just putting that money in a bank to sit and accrue some minor amount of interest. It's money that's probably going right back out into the local economy to make, to, to, to achieve, you know, basic needs, to, to buy groceries and to pay for transportation and other basic necessities, healthcare, diapers, school supplies. We, uh, and, and so there's a, there's a community-based benefit to freeing up that kind of disposable income to support, to support businesses in local communities throughout the city, and that ultimately, I believe, means that we're creating jobs in neighborhoods. So I think it's a really important bill, and I thank the committee for hearing it today. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have been in discussion with the finance department today and the Department of Legislation, Legislative Reference, about an amendment proposal that would help on the front end here for, for all eligible people to be able to apply sooner.
Can we hear the agency reports?
Yep.
Then I'll come back to you.
Yep.
And then you can go over the amendment, because I think it's important that you take time to explain that.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now hear agency reports, and we'll go ahead and start with the Department of Finance.
Hi, good morning. Bob Sandomy, Budget Director for the City, representing the Department of Finance today. Just wanted to add a few comments to our, to our written response, just to summarize it for the committee. So, this bill, as was discussed, is for the lowest, you know, the bottom 25% in terms of, of pay, and the credit would go if they own a home in the city. So we did to, to first, just to get to the fiscal impact, we, you know, ran the data looking at our current payroll. We matched that up versus our property tax information to try to get a sense of how many people would be eligible, how many of those already live in the city versus how many of those are either renting in the city or live outside of the city. And in the report, it breaks down those categories. There are, by our records, there are a total of, let me just refer. In terms of total eligible, we have 11,000, about 11,000 employees, 11,200 employees, and about 2,700 of those would be, would be the lowest paid 25%. So starting from that, of those, about 2,700, there are 435 people that already live in the city and own a home in the city. So for the cost for those is that we're going to be providing a benefit for people that are already here, and we've estimated that cost would be about $800,000. We actually looked at the real property assessment data. I mean, on average, those folks own homes, you know, all across the board, but most of those are lower assessed homes, a little bit over $100,000 on average. And this credit would essentially eliminate the entire property tax liability for those, for that, for that group. And again, that cost would be about $800,000 total for the city, for those individuals. We also had to make an estimate of people that are in the city but are currently renting and folks that live outside of the city. So we estimate that the, the, the remaining group, there's 1,529 that we, that live in the city but do not own, and there's another 7,148 employees in that class that live outside of the city. So it's very hard to predict if those people would be incented to move or to own a home or purchase a home in the city because of this benefit. We modeled out a couple of options, whether 10% or 20% or 30% of those folks chose to live in the city, just to show a range. If, if on the high end, if 30% of that group chose to live in the city, that would be, again, using the same methodology, that would be a cost of $1.4 million of tax revenue to the city for a total of 2.3. I will say that our experience with similar credit, the public safety officer's credit, is we are convinced that it has not attracted any new people to the city. At the time that bill was passed, there were 531 eligible individuals that already lived in the city, and we've only gotten 283 individuals that have applied for the credit. So the remaining cohort of those people, they just either chose it wasn't worth it or they didn't apply for whatever reason. But there's no evidence that we can see so far from that credit that we've actually attracted new, new folks to the city for that one. So, that gets me to our, our comments. From a policy perspective, we feel that one of the flaws of this bill is that from a policy standpoint, we're providing a benefit to people that already live here. Traditionally, these types of bills are meant to incent new people into the city to create some kind of impact or benefit. We do not think there would be a positive impact to this, and, and on the contrary, we're actually giving away people to, to money to folks that already live here for this bill. And again, we know that because of the public safety bill, that we haven't attracted new entrants. We also, just from a, more of a theoretical perspective, we feel like it's a little bit problematic to favor one employee class versus another, and our concerns on this go back even to the original bill, the first one, which was the public safety officers. There's kind of no end to this. You know, we have a bill now favoring public safety officers. It was expen, it was extended to include 911 officers. Now we're making one to include the lowest-paid employees. We just don't see a, a policy reason why we would favor all those classes over another. There are homeownership benefits that already exist within the Housing Department for employees. Employees can get down payment assistance through the BEHIP program if they want to purchase a home in the city. And that guarantees that that money goes to people that are purchasing their first home in the city or are moving from outside the city to purchase their first home in the city. Whereas these credits, as, as we've laid them out, it's giving money away to people that are already here. So, based on those findings, as well as the myriad of fiscal issues that we're going to face over the next few years, biggest of them being Kerwin, which we're still going to have to figure out how to pay for that once we get some direction from the General Assembly this year. You know, based on those findings, we are opposed to the bill. If the bill were to move forward, we would ask for, just want to touch on a couple implementation issues. The bill talks about finance and human resources working together to gather the data, and that's okay. There was a section about who would communicate the benefit to employees. We, we feel like that's better served with human resources rather than finance. Human resources reaches out and touches employees on benefits packages, and we feel like that would be the better mode of communication. On some of our other tax credits, finance manages those credits, but those are more geared towards the development community essentially. And then the public safety officer's credit, which is similar to this, the police department's HR folks manage the communication to make sure people know that it's eligible. So there's just one correction on there that we would ask for that to be, to be clarified. And then in addition, to have this credit available in the system, takes some programming on the side of the BSIT, the city's information technology department. So what they've told us, it will take months, if not close to a year, to get this programmed and be ready for applications. So we would just ask that the date be pushed back to allow enough time to do the implementation work that's needed to be done. So based on that, we have, we're opposed to the legislation, but if it were to move forward, we would ask for those considerations for the bill. So happy to take any questions.
What is your description, give some descriptions of low-income employees, because public safety employees are really in a different pay bracket?
Yeah, they're, they're, the public safety employees are in a different bracket. They don't fall generally within that lowest paid 25%. Most of these, most of these workers are going to be in either the AFME or Cub Union, so think of it as kind of frontline, kind of labor-type positions.
Do you share some of those?
Sure, you know, driver positions, labor positions. I would say, you know, kind of administrative positions that are office work, but that are more of the administrative. I don't have the exact classifications, but almost all of those fell within those categories. And, you know, one, one additional point I forgot to mention on that is, if we're trying to provide a benefit for certain classes of people, I mean, it's, it's much easier to, to provide it through pay. And AFME in particular signed this year a contract where they got a 3% raise plus bonuses for certain members. So we feel like that's the better way to handle these types of benefits, is to work directly with the bargaining units so that we're fair and, and smart across the board, and we do it within what our known resources are.
Councilman Risinger, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that regards to those employees who are at the bottom of the totem pole and use the state at AFME and Cub, being Chairman Leonius, I see so many, you know, TIFs and pilots and credits given to developers who are investing in the city, and I support that. But I think that this council, and I think that this administration should really be looking at the workers, the city workers that, and I'm being realistic and serious about this, that 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning in the frigid cold, they're out there digging up a hole because of a water main break. They're out there collecting our trash, the bulk items and all that. And I think anything that we can do to help those employees in the city of Baltimore? And I think anything that we can do to help those employees in the city of Baltimore more, and just as Councilman Dorsey, I echo and support him, is that it's, it's more spending power. It's almost like a bonus that they're going to, bonus check that you get. And, you know, I know a lot of, I might be being disrespectful to police and the fire department, the majority live out in the suburbs and they making more money. I think it's time that we look at those employees, I'm repeating myself, that's out there at two, three in the morning and the fridge is cold, digging a hole because of water main break and keeping our city clean. Thank you.
Councilman Stokes?
I agree with my colleagues. A lot of times, those employees should feel like they've been ignored, and this is an opportunity to recognize their hard work here in Baltimore City. I mean, we, we, we say it to them, but this is an opportunity to prove it to them, that we understand their, their salary, but we understand they the ones that moved the city forward. They do the grunt work, and we got to recognize them also. So, I just wanted to share it with the group. Thank you.
Any other comments for the Department of Finance? Moving on to the city solicitor?
Yes, so, just to a few points, we approved the bill for forming legal sufficiency. The state law defines who can get the credit, so we don't have any flexibility on the 25%, just to put that out there. And it, it determines that it must be full-time employees, so just to be clear. And then, of course, the state law gives us lots of flexibility for other things, and, and everything that's in the bill is legally sufficient. I, I did note in my report, and I hadn't even talked to finance, that, you know, it's very complicated when you figure out who lives somewhere for an amount of time that qualifies as a dwelling under state property tax law, and it can be extremely difficult because it requires the person to live there for 12 months of the year preceding the tax year for which they apply for the credit. And of course, the tax year starts in, you know, July 1. So, it gets to be a math problem. And, and so essentially, you know, we defer to finance if they need some sort of other or can't make this credit work as written. On the page, it looks legal, but I don't, I don't profess to know what that is. And then finally, I'd note, I guess there was some sort of comment from the HR department about needing an amendment because it's not legal. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the amendment they want doesn't make a lot of sense. The language that's in this bill, just so the committee knows, exists in 13 other of the city's tax credits, and it gives, you know, essentially says finance will work with other agencies to make this work. That's legal as written, but if you want to change it and you want to give HR certain duties and finance other certain duties, you can also do that. So, anyway, the bill's legal as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I'll move to real estate, Department of Real Estate, Walter Horton.
Department of Real Estate recommends passage of this legislation.
Department of Housing, Community Development?
The Department of Housing defers to the Department of Finance.
Okay. And so, do we have anyone here representing human resources or information tech?
They're on their way across the street.
I'm sorry.
They're coming, they're on their way here.
Okay. What about the Office of Information Technology?
I don't think we have anybody.
BCIT defers to Finance on the bill.
Okay.
Can I comment on BCIT?
Yes, sponsor?
Thank you. I just wanted to, I know that Bob said that BCIT thought that it could take them up to a year to essentially generate the capacity to even process applications, which seems excessive. But in our conversations in the many months that we, that my office spent working to craft this bill with Finance and HR, BCIT said that, that it would take them two months to generate the ability to process applications. So, maybe, maybe they said that was a minimum. I don't know.
Well, what they've, what they've told us, they're still, the person they have working on it is still working on the, the previous one that passed, the 911 Officers Bill, and they haven't finished the work yet on that. So, they, the reason they said there was longer is because they have to finish that work. They only have one person that can do the, the work, and they had to finish that one before they could start working on this one to get it prepared. So, that was what they had shared with us.
And since human resources is on their way, they, maybe they can answer some of the, part of your question as well. So, while we're waiting for human resources, I'm going to go ahead with, there were some people that signed up for public testimony. And we'll start with Trevor Taylor.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, y'all. My name is, thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, my name is Trevor Taylor. I worked for Baltimore City for the last 17 years. I work for the Water Department. I'm also a member of AFME Local 44. I think that this bill will be a benefit for all city employees, the tax credit, just to get a little extra money so they can put on their tables and give them a chance to live the American dream, with purchasing a home for the first time. It also, the operational employees that I work with, we also live near our jobs. So, when the city actually have like a crisis or emergency or something, we actually there, we live near there to actually to respond to that. Majority of our employees, we don't make a lot, but yet, we do an awful lot for the city. We do great things for the city. We are the ones that pick up the trash. We are the ones that fix the water, water main breaks. We out there in the sun, we out there in the cold. And I think a, a benefit like this will help us all to actually purchase our home. We'd like to thank Dorsey for actually bringing this to the, introducing this bill, and also thank all the sponsors. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. James Carroll?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning to the Council Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. My name is James Carroll, and a former employee of Department of Public Works Waste Water Engineering Division. I'm in favor of the Bill 19 dash 079. For over 35 years, I worked for Department of Public Works, and I worked at the, in the engineering section. We worked actually in design, wastewater and storm drain at that time. And during that time, I saw a lot of people that worked for the city leave because of, you know, tax, property tax problems, low pay, whatever it may be. They left to other agencies, which I contemplated many times to just make more money. They also just left the country because, you know, they, the taxes were so high. So, they, not just the employees, the regular employees, some of the staff left, you know, and it was, it was kind of heartening, you know, because, like I said, I really contemplated leaving because of the high, high costs of property tax. So, once again, I'm in favor of this bill, and along with the members, you know, they, their jobs, we didn't actually, we weren't actually out in the field working per se, but we provided information for the people that was out in the field when they had water main breaks and stuff like that. They would have to get sewer locations and that kind of information from us. So, we worked long hours also. So, once again, I'm in favor of the bill, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Todd Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Todd Reynolds. I'm the political coordinator for the American Federation of Teachers in Maryland, where the state federation for the City Union of Baltimore as well as the Baltimore Teachers Union. I'm resident of District 5 as well, resident of Baltimore City. AFT enthusiastically supports this bill. I was going to be pretty brief in my comments. I did want to mention that we also are on the Kerwin Commission. We, AFT BTU is one of the seats on the Kerwin Commission. I'm disappointed to hear that there's been no mention about people leaving the city from the agencies, and that's probably one of the biggest threats to funding state aid for Baltimore City post-schools, declining enrollment. And this is one reason why we are enthusiastically in support of this bill to stem that tide, to do what we can to make sure more residents come into the city to send their children to Baltimore City schools, as well as doing something we can to the lowest-paid city workers who don't go into city work to get rich. They do this because they love their jobs, they love their communities, love their city. And I think we need to do what we can to support them. I'm here for any questions you have from the AFT or Cub or BTU perspective.
Just a comment, you raised a good point. It's not really just affecting the employees, it's their family and children, it's the whole, whole group.
Th, th, this is a big, big issue for all of our unions, obviously City Union of Baltimore, but AFT obviously is the parent organization for BTU. That's the biggest threat every year for us, declining enrollment. And with Kerwin coming in, it's going to be a per pupil, it's been a per pupil funding formula, it will continue to be a per pupil funding formula. Right now, there are grants to try to stem that tide. Those grants go away. And we need to do what we can to stem the tide of people leaving the city. That's happening at large alarming rates, and do what we can to bring more people into our, our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that's all that has checked off to testify.
Is it my name on it?
That's all that has checked off on the sheet I have there to testify, but if there's others that want to speak, come, recognize yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Chairwoman Middleton and members of the City Council Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. On behalf of the City Union of Baltimore Local 800, representing over 3,000 Baltimore City workers, we ask for a favorable vote on Council Bill 19 dash 0479, the Council's bill to grant full-time, low-income city employees a property tax credit on their homes within the city. The U.S. Census reports Baltimore's population will have dropped by thousands between 2010 and 2020. This loss is especially troubling when almost every city in America has grown by double digits. Baltimore and Detroit are the exceptions. This loss in population means lower revenues for the city, less economic activity, instability in neighborhoods, more commuters, and less federal funds following the 2020 census. The city of Baltimore needs to take this issue seriously and develop plans to address it. Cub has a plan to encourage our members to buy homes in Baltimore City. Cub will bring in real estate experts to counsel our members on how to shop for and purchase a home. The real estate advisors will go over the programs that help with down payment, low-interest loans, and other credits to help make mortgage payments more affordable. Currently, only 35% of low-income workers own homes in Baltimore. When our members buy homes, they become invested in the community, help to stabilize neighborhoods, work to improve schools, generate economic activity, and increase wealth for their families. This bill addresses two serious problems hurting Baltimore City, a declining population and a drop in homeownership. Because of these reasons, we urge a favorable vote on Council Bill 19 dash 0479. And just as a point of information, I would like to say, I had a member of mine from the City Union of Baltimore to come to me and, a few weeks ago, and she voiced to me that she loves her job. She works in the same agency I do, the Baltimore City Police Department, with civilians. She's been there over 30 years, and she does not make $40,000 a year. That in itself spoke volumes to me. So, as the President of the City Union of Baltimore, I thank you for your time, and I urge for favorable support of this bill.
Thank you. I'm still grasping the fact that you mentioned 30, only 35% of residents own homes in the city.
Yes.
That's statistics. Even though no one else has signed up, is there anyone else?
I just, I'm.
You signed up, but you did not check off to testify, but you, you're welcome to testify.
My name is Rhonda Wimbish, and I am a licensed real estate professional for 33, 34 years, I forgot to count. I work with everyone in the city. I have railtors, I have my own companies, so I have agents that work in the county. I pretty much work the city, low-income investors, seniors, I do a lot of seniors, a lot of estate sales. And I'm going to change my testimony a little bit. I have everything typed out, but when I heard Councilman Dorsey speak, and then I heard this gentleman over here speak, I realized, I don't think people really understand how the tax credits work. So, I'm going to talk about that a little bit. I think there's a misunderstanding. It does not put money in your pocket. It doesn't. I have, I'm a, I'm a parent of a disabled adult, and my house gets entitlements, and none of that money goes in your pocket. It gives you a resource, but it does not help you buy more groceries, it doesn't help you, you know, have an extra day at the fair. That's not how tax credit work. Also, if you challenge your taxes, which you can every year, it doesn't go in your pocket, it goes into an escrow. So, I'm going to talk about that in a minute. But property taxes are used to determine how much of a house a buyer can purchase. Baltimore City has the highest property tax rate in the state of Maryland. Baltimore City is 2.24%. The next highest jurisdiction is Howard County, which is 1.01%. So, that already is an issue when you're qualifying a buyer, that you have, the taxes are so high. Tax credits are not used when you qualify a buyer. Tax credits are only used once you own the house. Now, I would be, I would be happy to add what I know about taxes and tax credits and incentives if this bill is reconsidered. It has to be reconsidered because it's not going to help anyone. So, considering the fact that the tax rate is 2.24%, everyone in Baltimore City could use a tax break, especially all low-income homeowners, and we have a lot. Maryland considers low-income 48,678 or less for a family of four. This bill does not state what a low income is. I heard 25% of our lowest wages or whatever. You have to state an amount. The state states it with a tax credit. If you're going to get a CDA grant, it states it, you know, the grants incentive, they all state what is considered low income. And right now, the state considers it 48,640, 678. The 5th and 6th District of the Park Heights Community, your district, Chair Middleton, excuse me, Councilwoman Middleton.
Park.
And Park Heights Community has an average income of 26,950, which is 13,000 less than the citywide average income of 40,800. So, this, so, the state considers the low income of 48,678. The entire city is below that. The entire city is below the average income. So, it's just not Baltimore City workers, it's all, it's all of the entire city. Those homeowners in the 5th and 6th District are not going to be included in this bill. The 13th District, Bel Air Edison's average income is 47,000, which is below the, under the, the same amount. Those homeowners won't be included in this bill. The entire 9th District, Councilman Dr. John Bullock's district, is doing horribly. The medium household, and this is dealing with the highest, like down in Pig Town, is $40,000, 40,882, which is 8,000 below the, below the citywide income. Those residents won't benefit from this tax credit. Those residents won't benefit from this tax credit. The medium-income household is 40,800, which is less than what it was in 2014. So in 2020, Baltimore City has less of a household income than they had in 2014, which was 42,000. It's like the people in the city are making less money. Something is going wrong. The tax credits can benefit if this is reconsidered on how it's used. I think you have an opportunity to fix this and really help people upfront. So when you say, what is the medium household, I'm going to break that down in per capita. Per capita means each person. That means the average person in this city only makes $25,290. It doesn't matter whether you dig in a ditch, or you work at Johns Hopkins, because they make a lot less than Baltimore city workers, or if you work in Johns Hopkins in the emergency room with blood all over you. It doesn't matter. Everyone is low-income in this city, and this bill can benefit everyone. So we just came through Martin Luther King's birthday. That was what, Monday? Was that Monday? And he talked about equal rights, civil rights. You can't take one demographic and say, the city is going to benefit from this, and no one else, especially black people. How can we discriminate? We can't afford to discriminate. Everybody discriminates against us. So how the tax credits work? When you apply for a tax credit, and this all happened after the real estate crisis, you could get an FHA loan, and the average person is going to use an FHA loan to get a house, because it overlooks blemishes, it deals with low to moderate income, very few Baltimore city properties are sold conventional unless it's an investor. So after the real estate crisis, the government said you have to include your taxes and your insurance with your mortgage payment. So you don't have an option to get that tax credit back in your pocket. Senior citizens can, or people who've paid off their property. But if you have a mortgage payment and you get a tax credit, Councilman Dorsey, it's going to go into an escrow. It's going to make your escrow plentiful with the mortgage company. That person will never see that in their pocket, unless that tax credit is used at the very beginning, when that person is qualified for the loan. Is that possible? Yeah, but you got to write it in the bill. It's got to be something that is concrete and say, this person makes, you know, $30,000 a year, this will be their credit, we need to factor it in their qualification. Then it will benefit them. Other than that, the person will be qualified with the full tax bill. It will not put money in anyone's pocket. I am open, I am open to whatever I can give you up here in my brain, Councilman Dorsey. I am open. You can call me, email me, text me. I don't particularly like coming to City Hall, but we can meet, I can help you, we can figure this bill out.
There are some comments that Hillary would like to make.
I mean, all of these sound like great arguments, but this is a credit that the state had to authorize, and it mandates who gets it. It mandates that it be city employees who receive the lowest 25% paid. And so this body has absolutely no option to implement anything you're saying.
It's not going to help anyone. They do have a body, they do, because you're passing something that is discriminatory. It's still discriminatory. Ma'am, I understand the City Solicitor's Office. I know who you guys are. It is a discrimination to only take one demographic and do that. I'm just saying, the bill's not going to help anyone.
My facts. Thank you for your comments.
If you pass it, I will fight it through the ACLU. I will fight it through every means possible, through the Attorney General's Office. You cannot discriminate against people.
Thank you for your comments. And we do have Quentin here from, Jason, I'm sorry, here from the Human Resources. Could you, yes, well, you can speak right from there.
Yes. Good morning, Councilmembers. Thank you for hearing DHR on this bill.
Grab the, you got to grab the mic.
Thank you for hearing DHR's position on this bill. DHR does support the bill, but does have one particular issue as it relates to the delegation of authority to the Finance Director for the purposes of delegating to any agency some of the administrative functions with regard to administering and carrying out the bill, specifically because Finance houses a lot of the payroll data that would be required to assess whether or not someone is actually eligible for this bill. And so we would assist in providing any information that HR has, but because some of the employees actually work overtime, and that would impact whether or not they qualify, as for the lowest 25% of wage earners in the city, we would have to defer to Finance. And so we took issue with the Finance Department being delegated, or being able, rather, to delegate the duties of the administration of this bill to any other agency. But overall, we support the bill, and just wanted to bring that before the council.
Any questions to Human Resources? Thank you for coming and giving that important testimony. And at this point, we're going to go back to the sponsor, which is going to explain, he had mentioned it in amendment earlier. So Councilman Dorsey, you want to explain your amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I provided something that I drew up kind of as an amendment concept, something that I've been working through in my mind for a while and trying to suss out, and had pretty extensive discussion out in the lobby at about 11 o'clock today with representatives from the Finance Department, who we didn't hear from today, who are the folks that helped us to put this bill together. So it's probably worth hearing from them also. And also with DLR, where's Tony? Tony's around here somewhere, in the back there. And we kind of worked out a rather different way of achieving what I'm after, what I was after with this amendment, but essentially, I want us to be able to, there are certain period of people who could, for example, the bill talks about needing to work for the city for a full year prior to becoming eligible to receive the credit, but there are certain circumstances under which a person, based on when they might start working for the city, could end up, the way it's drafted in the first reader, could end up having, end up working for the city for one year minus a day, and then not be able to apply and become eligible to get the credit for a full year later, till they've worked for two years minus a day. And what I'm after with this amendment is to at least capture those people halfway between, so they would basically start getting the credit at having worked for the city 18 months minus a day, or actually essentially just be able to get the credit sooner. And I'd really like to ask for the folks from Finance who discussed this with me, and for Tony from DLR to help articulate the way this would happen.
Can they come up to the podium, whoever they are? Recognize yourself. So you're going to explain the amendment. Are those on? Yes, that's fine.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name's Dave Riker. I'm with the Department of Finance Fiscal Integrity Office. This is our director, Joanna Collado. Just for the record, our work with Councilmen and our testimony here today should not be construed in any way as support or opposition to the bill. We're simply the people that have to implement it. And therefore, we've worked with the Councilman. He explained his concerns to us, and the changes that he has proposed, I think we've incorporated in the, some potential changes to the language of the bill. Basically, as he stated, he was interested in capturing people who might miss the credit by not being employed for the full 12 months, because this credit is, in order to be eligible for this credit, you have to be within the lowest 25% of full-time employees. In order for the Department of Finance to make the determination of who that group of people is, we utilize data from the prior calendar year, which is the tax data that we have available. The city prepares it every year. It's readily available. And in January, we can make a determination as to who, in the prior 12 months, was within the lowest 25% of full-time employees, lowest paid within the, lowest 25% of full-time employees. So essentially, we have to make that determination based on historical data. And even though it's only a few months old at that point, by the time we would be awarding the tax credit, it will be six months old. And therefore, Councilman Dorsey was interested in being able to capture people who might not have been here for those full 12 months, but would be here for 12 months at the time the credit was awarded. Therefore, if we look at the bill as it exists right now, in Section F, which is the additional eligibility requirements, under F1, we have, the current language reads, have been continuously employed for 12 months with the city. We would like to change that, or Councilman Dorsey would like to change that, as have been continuously employed with the city for nine months as of March 31st. That would allow for them to have been employed 12 months by the time the credit is actually awarded. Similarly, there would be a change to the number, minimum number of hours worked, which would be changed from have worked a minimum of 15 hours to have worked, 1,500 hours, excuse me, to have worked a minimum of 1,200 hours as of March 31st. Those two changes would then move that period of time and length of employment forward in time, even though we're still using historical data to capture who the lowest 25% are, we're moving those eligibility requirements forward in time so that we can allow the credit to be available to people who might otherwise not be eligible because they were employed, or they began employment after January 1st of the prior calendar year. One of the other things that we discussed was that...
In a sense, it's going to help someone that's just maybe one day less from that year instead of waiting two years.
Correct. Somebody who was here for 10 or 11 months instead of 12 months of the prior calendar year, but by the time we go handing the credit out in July, they've been here for 12 months, this would allow us to grant the credit to those people. However, one of the caveats of making that change is that if you are then moving the required timeframe of employment to what would essentially be a minimum of six months in the prior calendar year, you need to move the requirement for pay from gross pay to annual rate. And the reason being, if you only require employment for six months within the prior year for the calculation of lowest-paid full-time employees, you'll be capturing six months of gross pay rather than 12 months, and therefore, you would be, you could potentially, if the cutoff ended up being somewhere around 40,000, and we're not, again, we're establishing a list of people, not a cutoff, but if that potential cutoff was 40,000, you could very well end up with someone who had an annual rate of pay of 80,000, but had only been employed for six months. So I don't think that was the intent of the legislation, and therefore, we would want to change gross pay to annual rate if we're making these other changes to the time period in which someone has to be here to be eligible.
Any questions? Councilman Stokes?
Not a question, but I don't see where the bill discusses secondary employment or total household income. Is that a problem?
Say that again.
The bill doesn't discuss secondary employment or total household income.
So you're stuck with what the state gave you? So those factors aren't mentioned in the state law at all? So they wouldn't be part, they couldn't be part of this calculation? And we wouldn't have any ability to bring that in? But, you know, so you may capture someone who works for Baltimore City and meets the state's criteria, and happens to be married to someone who makes a million dollars. So you don't have any, as I was saying before, you don't have any power to change that, because again, all of our tax credits come from the General Assembly, and they set the parameters. So, I mean, if you want to implement it, that's, you know, that's the, that's what you're stuck with.
Any further questions for, are you finished? Okay. Any further questions? Councilman Costello?
No.
Oh, okay. Councilman Dorsey, are you finished?
I...
Is there any more you want to say before we...
Just recess.
Oh. Recession for 30 seconds.
Madam Chair, oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Can we have, Bob, can we explain this amendment one more time in summary? And I just want to, I didn't have what Councilman Dorsey provided with his narrative kind of explaining it, so I just wanted to sync up what you were explaining with the amendment with what he has in writing.
So, yeah, I would defer to the, I'll defer to these folks, because they do the...
Or to the group that just spoke.
Nate, thank you, Madam Chair. So essentially, I don't know if you have specific questions, but I'll go through it one more time real quick. Under the way the bill is currently drafted, there will be a selection of the 25% lowest-paid full-time employees based on the prior tax year or calendar year, which in this case would be 2019. So we would look at pay, be it gross pay or annual rate, which is part of this amendment, and we would find the lowest 25%. That would be the list of potentially eligible employees. Then, Section F of the legislation, Paragraph F, establishes additional criteria for eligibility, the first of which in F1 is that the employee have been continuously employed for 12 months with the city. The original intent, I believe, was to apply that 12 months to that same tax year, but The proposed amendment would change that to have been continuously employed with the city for nine months as of March 31st, which would allow an employee who was hired on or before July 1 of the prior calendar year to be potentially eligible for this credit.
All right, so just running through this in my head, if today is January 25th, so if you were, if you began working with the city on July 1st of 2019 or prior, as of March 31st of 2020, let's say this was already in effect, of course, you would be, you would meet one of the criteria to be eligible.
Correct.
To receive the credit, okay, got it.
Correct. F2, so Paragraph F2 refers to the number of hours required that you would have worked. Previously, the way the bill is currently drafted, the requirement is that the employee must have worked a minimum of 1,500 hours?
In, in that nine-month period or the one-year period?
And again, the way the bill is currently drafted, there is no specific application of that 1,500 hours. It would be presumed, and the Law Department can speak to how this would be interpreted, but most likely applied to that calendar year in which the determination was made.
Calendar year or tax year?
Both. 2019, think of it that way. The same year in which the determination of who would be potentially eligible was made, you would apply the 1,500 hours and the 12 months, the way the bill is drafted, to that year.
So in the example I provided, you start an employment on July 1st. By March 31st, the city's going to make a determination of the eligible pool. Let's say that person had missed one week of work in that nine-month period. They would not have hit the 1,500 hours because a full-time work year is 2,000 hours. Three-quarters of a work year is 1,500 hours, right?
Okay, so, to back up a second. The current legislation has 1,500. If you were to move to a nine-month requirement by March 31st, you would want to reduce that number. To correspond to nine months of employment. I believe that number's somewhere around 1,200, but whatever it ends up being.
Got it, got it.
As of March 31st. So again, you would have to, you would have to have been employed or have to have worked a minimum of that number of hours by March 31st. Of 20, in your example, of 2020. So you would still have to have been employed by July 1 of 2019. You would still have to be in the lowest 25% paid of full-time employees within 2019. And then you would have to have worked a minimum of 1,200 hours as of March 31st.
Okay. And the amendment that's being proposed simply clarifies that?
No, the amendment changes us from 12 months, 1,500 hours, all the way the bill is currently drafted.
Nine months.
To be interpreted in the prior year. In other words, all of that would have had to have occurred in 2019. So your 12 months of employment would have had to have begun on January 1, 2019, or earlier. And your 1,500 hours would count from January 1, 2019 to December 31, 2019.
Okay.
The way the bill's drafted currently, that's how it works. The proposed amendment changes it to say, if you were hired on July 1 of 2019 or earlier, and you've, you've been continuously employed, and from July 1 of 2019 until March 31 of, of 2020, you get to 1,200 hours.
1,175.
Then, you would be eligible, provided you're within that 25% from the prior year.
Got it. Okay, so basically, the amendment is to change Section F1 and 2 to reflect that, that partial year issue as you just discussed.
Correct.
And Tony, if I move an amendment to that effect, you're able to, to draft that up based on this conversation?
Absolutely.
And before you move anything, Mr. Chairman Costello, excuse me, Councilman Costello, the, the other aspect of that change, and it was discussed briefly, is that within Section E1 of the bill, the bill currently refers to gross pay. And the idea being that if you're looking at a full tax year, so if you're looking at January 1, 2019 to December 31, 2019, somebody's gross pay is the best indication of what they've made in that year.
Right.
Okay? However, once you make this other change and you move it to July 1, you'll no longer want to look at gross pay, you'll want to look at annual rate. And the reason being, somebody who's worked a full year and made $35,000 is essentially equivalent in terms of gross pay to someone whose annual rate is $70,000, but has only worked six months.
Say that one more time.
So if, if, if you've been here from January 1 to December 31st, and your annual rate's $35,000 a year, then on December 31st, the city's paid you 35,000, that's your gross pay.
Correct.
If I come into the city and start on July 1, my annual rate's $70,000 a year.
Got it, got it.
By December 31st, I've made the same amount you have in terms of gross pay, even though my annual rate is double yours. So if you move that, that time period six months forward, you're going to want to change from gross pay to annual rate.
Okay, so, thank you, David, that's very helpful. So Madam Chair, I would move that.
The Law Department would like to make some, make a comment.
I really hate doing this, but I'm sitting here realizing that the state law says that these people have to be full-time employees. So we're all there. The city's adding the hour requirement. So I just think it might be worth addressing, do you mean the hours the people actually wrote on their timesheet that they worked? Including or excluding vacations, sick leave, whatever? Because you, you could end up having somebody who took too much vacation and doesn't meet the 1,175. Now granted, maybe that's crazy because that math never works out and you could take all your vacation and still hit 1,175, but because the state law requires them to be full-time employees, I just want to be clear what you mean about hours worked. It's fine to put that in there and change the number, but just, you know, just so there's some clarity here for Finance and others, like what does that mean? Are they going to be looking to check and see that you, you know, you still meet the 1,175 with or without leave? So, again, sorry.
Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. Perhaps if I explain the intent here, it can help us understand if this is the appropriate language. Again, we worked for a while to try to craft the language, and this is what we've got. The intent is that there are certain people who are technically full-time employees of the city, but for, Mike Mancuso would be a good example of one. Technically, he's a full-time employee of the city, but as the President of the FOP, he's technically on full-time administrative leave. And so he doesn't actually work any hours for the city. And so what we wanted to establish here is 1,500 is for a full-time employee close to the minimum, the minimum number of hours that one has to actually work in order to be considered a full-time employee. As opposed to 2,000, you don't have to work all of 2,000 hours a year in order to be technically a full-time employee. 1,500 is what you work in order to, if, if there's a better word than work that achieves that.
I mean, that's up to you. I don't know that Mr. Mancuso is going to be in the lowest 25%, but perhaps he is.
But to, to make the point of who is a, a person who technically works, who, who technically is a full-time employee, but not actually working.
Right, and I get the intent, I'm fine with it. And of course, the state law says you can have additional criteria, and this criteria makes sense. I just want you to understand that you could be in a situation of, you know, a 30-year employee who now is entitled to this credit, but took their FMLA leave. And so for some reason, for medical reasons, they now can't get the credit. If you're looking at hours worked, just be clear what, what it is you want. I mean, I can defer to HR or Finance what that would mean, but I'm looking, or you can leave it for regs if you feel that's easier, but just, just, you know, know what you're doing here, you know, which people you want to include and exclude, that's all.
Human Resources, have, do you have a comment?
Sure, we did have, have quite a bit of back and forth internally as we digested this bill. And we spoke about hours worked. And we considered if someone would take FMLA leave. We didn't want it to count against them, we didn't want it to be a regressive thing, such that if you needed to take that FMLA leave, you'd still be eligible for the credit. So that's DHR's position on it, is that FMLA leave or any type of leave like that, particularly where you're still accruing additional leave and those types of things, that you'd still be eligible for this bill so long as you meet the minimum threshold, $1,500.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Madam Chair, as the primary drafter of rules and regulations for tax credits for the Department of Finance, while I understand that, that the Solicitors Office has suggested that we could deal with this in rules and regs, I would be concerned, given the, the desire to cut out FMLA leave, that if the council wishes to deal with the leave issue, that they deal with it in the legislation itself so that any potential rule and reg down the road is not deemed to be arbitrary and capricious. This is, this is a pretty substantial policy decision, and I think it would be important that it be dealt with in the legislation itself as opposed to with any potential rule or regulation.
Certainly, if you want your intent clear, make it here now, absolutely.
And, and one other point, if I may, Madam Chair. While, while the Finance Department is happy to explain this change, we also should point out that this change incorporates the usage of data that is not currently available. We would have to adopt a new method of calculating these particular accumulation of hours and accumulation of time worked. It's not as simple as what we have at the end of calendar year 19, which is our federally mandated tax year reporting, which is readily available. So bear in mind that if, this change is going to add to the workload for BSIT in terms of the, the administration of the tax credit system and bringing this tax credit online. Thank you.
Any more conversation about the amendment? Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to move the amendment.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor Dorsey.
Microphone?
Bob, I'm sorry. When you asked Bob about the finance amendment recommendation, our amendment recommendation was to move it to be effective the following year because as we have indicated, BSIT have indicated they need at least six months. They submitted an opinion for this bill where they indicated that they at least need six months to be able to make the application available. So that was our, the finance recommendation, so I didn't want to mix the two.
Okay. So based on what Hillary said, I'm assuming the amendment, the amendment can stay as it is, correct? Okay, so I'd like to move that we amend Section E1 and F1 and 2 to reflect the conversation we just had with Mr. Riker.
Motion to move the amendment by Costello, do I get a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair McCray. Chair Middleton, yes, Vice Chair McCray.
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Reissinger?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
It's unanimous for the amendment. Is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There was one other brief discussion about notification to employees being given by the Finance Department? And a suggestion that notification of eligibility should be made instead of by the Finance Department, by HR? Is that something that is agreed upon by Finance and HR?
Yeah, so, when we first met to discuss this, it was my view that, that HR would be in a position of being able to get the notification out to employees. When I came back to the office, I learned that we had a scope issue in the way of we don't, we don't have enough employees to really handle the notification requirement to all of the employees that would be eligible for this tax credit. And it was the thought of the Director that, given that we have payrolls, I mean, paycheck stubs and other forms of communication that come out from Finance, that maybe we could use that opportunity to communicate with employees as opposed to using a separate communication medium used by DHR. So we were thinking we could scale what's already been communicated to employees through Finance as opposed to creating, using additional resources.
So.
I'm trying to hand this back to Finance.
Yeah, but the notification in here is by certain date.
Yeah.
And that might not match with the payroll, a payment stop. So that wouldn't be able to be used for that.
I, I don't have authority right now to override our Director's position on it. I would ask the council if maybe we could reserve time to, to discuss it and come to some agreement on it.
30-second recess.
No, this, Madam Chair, this is something I think that could be resolved for second reader.
Okay.
If we could resolve this for second reader, I'd be, I'd be happy to introduce the amendment from the floor.
Resolving, okay.
Whether or not Finance or HR will be responsible to provide notification to potentially eligible employees, since HR is asking for additional time to discuss with Finance.
So it's my understanding you want to move, the bill is favorable, but you want to do the amendment.
The amendment that Councilman Costello has already moved, that's already been moved and approved. I would ask that the bill be, okay, I need 30 seconds, if I may.
30-second recess. Okay, we're back in session. So we're gonna, we're gonna have to move the bill as amended, and then the sponsor of the bill will possibly introduce another, another amendment at second reader. Correct. Okay, do I have a motion to move the bill as amended?
So moved.
So moved by Costello, a second?
Second.
Second by McCray. Chair Middleton, yes, Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Reissinger?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
This bill will be moved to second, to second reader. Thank you all. This hearing is adjourned.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you all for your patience.